Okay, alright. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for September 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. I'd like to call the meeting's order and begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, an area indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
Alright, welcome and welcome to those who are here in the audience today and for those of you who are watching online live or at a later point. We'll go ahead and ask for a city reporter to help us with our roll call.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbo.
Here.
Mayor Ebelke.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Torres.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our consent calendar gone over in the full detail last night during the work session. Is there a motion from or from the council to a consent calendar?
Oh, I'll make your motion to accept the consent calendar as presented. So yeah.
Okay, heard it first from Counselor Hamilton and second from Counselor Garbo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, number four is public comments evening. And we have one public comment in person.
Correct.
And none online.
Correct.
Okay, alright, well before we get begin public comment, I just want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of foreign open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city reporter are taking any notes of action if needed. And first up, I have Justin Boiles here to speak from on the topic of state parks and community support. Justin, are you here?
Hi. You're on.
And I see that you are a resident, are you a resident of Portland, Oregon?
I am, yes.
Well, bring you to North Bend.
I, well, that is exactly, yeah, so what brings me to North Bend? I am here to build support for our state parks. So I am a conservation advocate for Environment Oregon, which is a state-based environmental advocacy nonprofit organization. We work on issues that will help heal divides that we see within our communities. And one of those surrounding our environment and we believe is our, our state parks. A place where we can all get out and experience everything that Oregon has to offer, whether it's the coast or the high desert, the mountains, rivers, lakes, waterfalls, if you like to get outside. Our state parks are a great place to experience it. And they're also accessible to so many different populations, whether you want to hunt or fish or boat or paddle, hike, backpack, so many different activities, picnic, relax, just watch some wildlife or watch the waves crash. And these are all opportunities that help bring us together as communities and help connect us with the natural world around us. Doesn't matter where your background is or where you're headed, we think our state parks are something that can bring us together. And so I am traveling from Portland, Oregon, all over the state this summer. I'm going to a lot of rural places, talking with city councilors, reaching out to county commissioners, connecting with our state park staff, connecting with local organizations. And doing a survey to help elevate the voices of rural Oregonians in terms of how they think about our state parks and their experience with our state parks and how we might be able to find creative solutions to fund those state parks. Also connected to that effort, we are hosting and have been hosting around the state walks in the park with state park staff, with community organizations, people from the community. I had previously sent an email to each and every one of you inviting you to join us, inviting you to meet with me and talk more in depth with this on this issue and connect with us. Get out to the park and enjoy it with hopefully with a number of your constituents. And so now I'm here mostly to listen, to see what's going on in North Bend and hear what types of things we might be able to, what other types of things we might be able to find common ground on when it comes to our environment, things that we share, clean air, clean water, open spaces. We all need them to live and we want to make sure that we have those for ourselves and for future generations. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Next on the agenda is our public hearing. Public hearing on number 2083. North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment to Conduct and Public Hearing to Receive Testimony Regarding Ordinance Number 283, which would improve the North Bend renewal plan amendments. So I'm gonna go ahead and I have some information here with a script on our public ordinance. And I see we have a attorney online, so I'll just go ahead and begin with that and open the public hearing. I'll ask the councilors whether there are any conflicts of interest or expertise contacts to report. Okay. Hearing none, then I'm gonna ask the staff to present the reports.
Lieutenant Mayor, Council, this has been a long time coming. We have been at this almost two years. We have done an exhaustive review of the Urban Renewal Agency and we have engaged through your collaborative efforts, Elaine Howard, the foremost expert in urban renewal in the state, and have revised and updated our plan. The largest part of this plan are obviously projects and projects are outlined in the Urban Renewal Agency Plan. The largest being a housing project, which is the demolition and reconstruction of the properties that the Urban Renewal Agency bought in 2021 at a mere cost of $125,000, which came with two additional lots on the south side of Virginia that far exceeded even that amount. The vision was always collaborative with the county that had become housing. And so with our federal delegation, that being Senators Marple and Wyden and Representative Hoyle, we were able to secure $4 million towards that project. And so we have approached each of the taxing districts and those that were required to get concurrence. We have successfully received their concurrence for this plan. And so we have communicated to all of the utility customers through the mail, educating them on the plan, the fact that we'll be increasing the maximum indebtedness. This does not mean that, in fact, I've only had one citizen come and ask me about it. So I take that either that they're very happy with where we're headed and the information we set out was great or they're just absolutely apathetic and they're like, go do your thing and let us know otherwise. You never know, but the one gentleman just wanted to make sure that, as understandably, he's distressed with the government and wanted to be assured that this effort was not raising his property taxes. And so he was thrilled to find out that it's actually a tax break. We've only had one other individual ask why we did the under levy and did we actually foreshadow the vote by the school board? And emphatically, we were able to communicate back to them that no, the under levy, as you all knew, was a process to slow down and buy time so that we could actually redress the issue. Because if we had exhausted 100% of the maximum indebtedness available to us, there was only a couple of options. One, go ahead and sunset the Urban Renewal Agency, increase it by, you're allowed 20%, or to simply sunset and recreate a new Urban Renewal Agency. It's in the city's best interest to further it and you wear dual hats. You obviously had said this in the motion as commissioners with the Urban Renewal Agency. And so now because you are one of the taxing districts that participates in it, your vote is the final vote in order to then close out the circle and actually have the amendment left and then within 30 days put into effect. And so the ball's at your court. So with that said, that's the staff report and staff is open to any questions that you might have.
Alright, thank you. Well, now the public testimony portion of the hearing, written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council and staff. There's a three, there's a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance 2083? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? We'll now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter?
No, but I just want to say that this is an incredible opportunity that this team, our city staffers generated. Once in a generation of more money coming through the feds for housing in a town our size, just is unheard of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I agree, Counselor Jones, this has been a long time coming and it's still gonna take a little bit to finish the project.
Yeah.
But it feels like things are finally getting traction and moving in the right direction. So, thank you. Okay. Alright, well, if there's no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at this time. Okay, now, I will have, that was number five on the agenda, was the public hearing. Now I'll go ahead and move into number six, and that is the adoption of ordinance number 2083. And this is approving the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. So this brings us to ordinance number 2083 and ordinance approving the North Bend Urban Renewal Amendment. New Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Cause I have, is there a separate staff report for this?
The thing the staff wants to relay is that this is not a tax increase. This is a continuing of the shared money that allows money from other taxing districts to stay local. And the largest change in the plan is the housing project. And so this is workforce housing and so we anticipate that within 18 months, we should be in construction if all goes well. And more importantly, there is no real changes with the rest of the plan. It continues to further the vision, so we still have money set aside for our downtown grants within the Urban Renewal District for facade grants and urban revitalization. And staff will be coming to you later this year. Now that we're very confident that the plan has the opportunity to move forward, once it actually is in effect, we'll then start pulling off some of the program income that we have from some of our Urban Renewal Agency properties. And we're going to propose that in what I call a beyond main grant program for outside the district. And so we'll continue to try to give back, but that will be really your decision. We'll present that to you later this year, however. And with that, that concludes the staff report.
Alright, thank you. And I know you painstakingly gone over and over and over and tried to spell the mess that come up about Urban Renewal and why people think it's a tax increase and then you continue to give the correct information. If people today still want to try to learn more, is the best place to still direct them is to the city website for that?
Yes. NorthBendOregon.us/ura has all of the information, all the communication, all of the training links. And we are just really grateful for the Ford Family Foundation that really partnered with the city of North Bend, being able to open up training for every Urban Renewal Agency, every school board and district and the county and cities in whose county, because I think that that's going to pay great dividends. And I think it's really educated a lot of folks that we are in this together and it is a team of fraud.
Yes.
And so that is the best place to get information.
Good, alright, well, thank you. That is right there on the North Bend website. I will now entertain a motion to have the first reading by title only.
First to have the ordinance 2083 read by title only, first reading by title only.
So.
Alright, I heard it first from Counselor Jones and the second from Counselor Garbo. Is there any discussion? Right, all in favor of the first reading of ordinance 2083 be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do the adjournment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2083 and ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and directing that notice of approval be published.
Thank you. Well, now we entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only.
I'll make the motion to have the second reading of ordinance 2083 by title.
Second.
Heard first from Counselor Hamilton and second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor of the second reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number 2083 and ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and directing that notice of approval be published.
Alright, so now, Mr. Wolf, can I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2083?
Yes, that would be perfect.
And anything else, three. I'll now entertain that motion to adopt ordinance 2083.
I move the city council adopt ordinance 2083 approving the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Second.
Heard first from Counselor Slater and the second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion?
Just a quick one. My council's put together the 1994 Urban Renewal District and this is the progression in the right direction and the issues that we wanted to accomplish industrial-wise, economic-wise and with our citizens. So it's a wonderful improvement, a wonderful continuation.
Day of celebration. Long time, thank you Counselor Slater for all of your work back when you were mayor. Coming to permission. Alright, so we had our first, we second, and let's see, are we at?
Roll call.
Yeah, is this a roll call though, city of the order?
This is a roll call.
Okay. What do you hope so with that?
Counselor Jones, so standing.
For the resignation.
Or for the ordinance.
Counselor Hamilton.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garbo.
For the ordinance.
Mayor Ebelke.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Slater.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Torres.
For the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess it's a little bit of random pause there on them. Alright, so I do see Mr. Wolf, I have some information regarding the ordinance adoption process or adoption of single reading, is that something that I need to read into the minutes? Nope.
No.
We are clear on this matter?
The ordinance passed and it will be effective 30 days from today.
Okay, alright, thank you so much. Number seven, number seven on the agenda is, is there a motion from the council on the memorandum of agreement for mutual aid and emergency response between the United States Coast Guard Base in North Bend and North Bend?
I move the city council authorize Mayor Ebelke to sign a memorandum of agreement between the United States Coast Guard Base North Bend and North Bend Police Department, subject to final form review by our city attorney.
Second. I heard it first from Counselor Jones and the second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any further discussion? All in favor for the city council to authorize myself to sign the memorandum of agreement between the United States Coast Guard Base North Bend and North Bend Police Department, subject to final form review by the city's attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Number eight on the agenda is there a motion for the authorization to apply for Business Oregon Housing Infrastructure Support Fund?
I move the city council authorize the city administrators to apply for Business Oregon's Housing Infrastructure Support Fund to execute all documents necessary to submit the application and if awarded, accept an administrative offense.
So.
Thank you, Counselor Jones, that I heard first from you and the second from Counselor President Garbo. Any discussion? Yeah, first, first, second, no discussion, all in favor to, for the council to authorize the city administrator to apply for Business Oregon Housing Infrastructure Support Fund and execute all documents necessary to submit the application and if awarded, accept an administrative offense, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was number eight on the agenda. So number nine was action, if we told you from executive session, I don't believe we had any. Then we would move to number 10, our city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, of all things. Our ice skating rink will return, it will be opening on November 15th. And yet again, here we are several years to this, we're always dispelling the fact that the taxpayers did not pay for a skating rink or a tent. We did that through tourism, transient logic packs and grants. And so, in fact, I really give a great shout out to Stephanie Wilson because last year alone, we had over $50,000 of sponsorships and they have re-upped for this year. And so it continues to grow momentum and so we actually have dedicated staff and will be opening earlier than we have in the past because the popularity is there to support it. Moreover, we did dismantle the ice skating rink this year, so we could have actually been ice skating in July if we wanted to. We just chose not to operate it.
Maybe that's the event, ice skating in July, this year.
Of course, and Santa will come out there with you, will probably pay you some money. In the Urban Renewal District, want to say that we've got some exciting growth and things happening. Just some highlights, Tin Roosters under new ownership. And the same team also owns Zeke Hills. And they are closed, but will be reopening. And so we'll have a little fanfare about that when they do so. 350 degrees, the bakery has expanded into a larger space, just two doors down. And now they've actually expanded their menu. And so you can even get soup and sandwiches and, you know, breakfast sandwiches and the like. Ward Walk Bubbles will be moving into 350 degrees, former location, so we have a new business coming in. We also have Carving Anvil, a new woodworking retail store that will reopen soon in downtown. Gino's Pizza has new owners and a new sushi restaurant will be soon opening in the former Pedimental Forest. So lots of great things within the Urban Renewal District. Also, I'm happy to say that the fire department was awarded $80,000 in grants to the Oregon Department of Emergency Management. And so we were provided with a new unmanned aerial vehicle, also called a drone, and also trailer mounted sandbagging machine. These are for the benefit of mutual aid and helping out the region. And then after five years, they become the property of North Bend. I also want to say that we received a generous $16,000 donation to our K9 program.
Wow.
That thermometer over there actually blew up at top. We've exceeded $50,000 in donations, far exceeding. And then we, of course, had all of the in-kind services that came along with that. The police department has arranged for a meet and greet with all of the donors. It will be a private event and we want to thank the Coquell Casino for hosting that. They'll also be doing a benefit concert to support our K9 program. And you'll hear more information of that. But thanks to Penn and Joyware for that generous donation to the program. In public works, you know, I think about one of the first federal grants that I wrote for the city back shortly after I got here and it was our EPA grant project. I can't say that Ralph pulled his hair out for this because we'd actually have to have hair pull out when I'm watching. But Ralph doesn't take time off and I'm proud to say that he and the team have completed three major projects, all with EPA grant funding. That's the into sanitary sewer lining. The pump station number four, the Pony Slough Road construction that eliminated the pump and now has the three-laced stop. And so just an all-around great project. We had some, you know, move fast and then stop quick along the way. But we are getting a lot of positive feedback now from that. And folks, when they get out of school, can't play, get out of school in a timely fashion. So with that said, that is the city administrator's report. We published on our website, it was distributed to the news media via email and cross-posted it from social media.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you on that. That takes us to our committee reports, do we have any committee reports?
I have one kind of update for your charge review committee, if you want to highlight on that.
Yes, we did have, there was one meeting, Counselor Slater, you were in person and I was online for the chart review and then the reminding, we had to get off of there, when the next meeting is.
Potentially a week after next, the 4th. But I know it's on the 8th.
I believe it's on October 8th, yeah, and we've met, the committee has met twice.
Early October, then the next day.
Do we know what whole year, what's ever?
Early.
Yeah, yeah.
Your city attorney can time in since.
Yes.
For the.
I'm happy to give a brief update, Mayor, if you'd like. Yeah, so the committee has met twice, the first meeting was really just to kind of get our footing, get folks elect a, I think it was a chair and maybe a vice chair. And the second meeting, the committee came back with some more robust discussions on potential changes, some of the changes to the charter that the committee is looking at. One is the mayor's term, which is currently two years to potentially extend that to four, changing the title of city administrator to city manager. We're looking at a safe harbor so that the council can fill vacancies, should there be less than a quorum due to recall, resignation, other circumstances where the council's left without a quorum. We're looking at council rules and whether those should be adopted via resolution or ordinance. Might help provide some flexibility if it's by ordinance. Yeah, and October 8th is the next meeting and we anticipate, but it's not set in stone, but we anticipate that there might be some recommendations coming following the October 8th committee meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, any questions, will they have on that? Tax break, alright. Okay, thank you. If there's no other committee report, go ahead and we want to counsel comments. Counselor Torres, any comments?
Tonight volleyball, Marshall versus North Bend tonight. I'm really excited, the first game, they were, they lost 23 to 25, but they were up multiple times. So I'm hoping that they'll rally and come back. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to our library. I saw all of the new activities that came out, like of all ages, all the way from young. I mean, two years old, I saw all the way up until adults. And I just really think it's awesome, especially for families I work with where they're looking for free family engagement, things to do with their children. So I just thought that was really awesome. I'm excited about all the stuff that they're doing.
Thanks, thank you. Counselor Slater?
Well, I just wanted to make a few comments on our quality staff that we have and workforce that way. Ralph Dunham, Public Works Director, covers so many things and there are all the items going on. I'll take a, it's not really insignificant, but it's a small piece. But 30 years ago, people were concerned about the high speeds going down Pony Slough Road, you know, as that was adjacent to have kids going to school and so forth. And what we did at that time was, okay, we put in two speed bumps. You know, one of them, the first one, or the one to the south, actually, a couple of months after it was in, we had to do something with the drainage there and it just became sort of a rise and that's the way it's been. I gotta say with the new project that they have, you've done the job, the speeds are down, that stop sign set was excellent, so it's maybe not a big issue, but it's a significant one. And I appreciate that amidst all the other stuff we got. We had the presentation on tsunami awareness.
uh awareness and what's going on in that from uh Chief Jim Brown. Uh and the beauty of that was not only the information, but the fact is it was in front of us again. Oh, you remember this? You need to be looking at this and doing that. And I appreciate the fact that you know what's significant and you make sure that we understand what's significant too. And then uh the last one is a big, big, big one that we talked about all going on and that's economic development, revitalization, and the future of our city going on and uh like David Milliron and our finance director, Jeff Prudence. I tried to get that right. You guys not only put together an excellent plan, but you persisted on it. You found ways to make the connections. You did a lot of really interesting things that have come on. And that's a significant difference over the twenty years prior to. And it's really laid the foundation for our future that I really appreciate what's going on. So we are really blessed with high-quality people that want to be a significant part of this and continue to do it. Uh thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilor Slater. Great.
Well, I'm excited about all the, all the K nine uh news and all the donations. I know what the K nine news that makes me think about uh and all the donors and I just think about, oh, sewers don't really get donations or donors and sewage, sewage and sewers are now just adorable sales as a puppy. And so I just think about this, again, our pipes and how old they are and how we still have a lot of work to do. Um and I just want to remind people that it's awesome that we have an adorable canine dog and we've got donations, but we still have other things. Sewage. Maybe. Sewer vacation sale. There are no bendy. Anyways, I think about it a lot. I think about how much we have to do. So I appreciate everything that everyone does, but it's not as glamorous.
The dog's gonna have a lot of uh wasted dollars, that's for sure.
Thank you, Councilor Schultz. Councilor Garboden? Okay, Councilor Hamilton?
Uh yeah, I've been so busy. Uh nearly, I really have noticed, uh I know it's been probably two weeks now, kids are dying at school. And so being aware that morning and afternoon, we have kids running around the community. Uh and uh, you know, thanks for the fire department chief for the presentation last night. Um tsunami thing is always found, I think everybody's mind and and where to go and what to do and you know, I mean, everybody watches the movies and, you know, I guess you're not scared to get a robo sticking in the backyard just in case you need it, but that's all I've got for tonight.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I I'm uh really grateful for the um putting together the K nine program. Wasn't aware that we had ones before. Um but I think that goes a long way to uh protecting all of us. Um, you know, with this facility for finding dangerous substances. Um so I think that'll go a long way. Um but the big news tonight really is um and a huge, huge thank you to our city administrator, uh David Milliron. Um, you know, I I I don't think very many communities our size thought really have had people on staff to learn how to use these tools that are typically envisioned by large cities. And that we can actually use those laws for our own uh needs even though we are dwarfed in population because in a lot of ways, we still have the same level of problems. So uh but being an innovator is never easy. It is never easy and our community has been divided on this um in that, you know, so a series of well-coordinated Hail Marys on many parties, but in particular for our city staffers and Senator Miller for having um the ability to 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 put together these plans in a way that we've never done. We're getting, we're getting funding in a way we haven't seen since, you know, I don't know. Rural electrification and, you know, the uh Eisenhower's roads. You know, there's just, there's just not a lot of emphasis on building infrastructure once you get outside of dense cities. So really lucky to have you.
Thank you. So I um agree with everything that everybody's already said already. Um I also want to say that, you know, when we, when you hear a presentation about tsunami awareness or something like that comes up, I do kind of like look in my bins really quick. You know, I went last night, like looking in the garage, time to rotate out some of the canned foods and like I said, I I think our call to action to everybody in the community is like, you know, maybe have a three-day hit, not a three-day hit. And that's not that hard to put together. Your fat sheet and everything that you have is always great. And I know you probably got that posted somewhere out there on the fire. They have it available, so pop one down to your local fire station if you want to get the list of uh of the things that should be in your go-kid or your three dates.
Your map has everything on command.
And then you pick those up right down there. So those are, those are always really handy. Um I have been able to test out the new straight uh stop sign, um I could help with stop stop signs, but I went on to put, took my dog running and put a smooth panel and you're like, just something different about good pavement. Um I had to deal with the lack of stop signs that were there uh for probably my high school years and both my daughter's so tall, probably fifteen years, and that is going to make a huge increase in um the flow of traffic there. So in nice uh addition to safety. So um with that being said, that is all that I have for this week. I did, I actually made myself a to-do list of all the upcoming activities and then shared it on my social media page. We don't have a uh meeting for um two weeks or a couple of weeks. And so uh we'll have like the sip and stroll before we meet again. And it's like after the sip and stroll, we go straight into like the Halloween activities. I already got my Halloween outfit. And then it's going to go right into Christmas. So it's a really fun time of year. And I love that like North Bend has like kind of become known for all of that, the fall and winter activity. So it's a fun season ahead. Next on the agenda is uh other business. I don't think we have any correct, right? And so then we don't have anything else. I can go ahead and join the meeting.